So, good evening and welcome everyone to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Work Session for Thursday, December 12th, 2024, and that will call the meeting to order. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agent?
So moved.
There he is second.
Okay.
It's been moved in second discussion. You're not all but it's adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. Uh council discussion topics tonight we have two uh the then the medias one, of course, is our comprehensive plan update and Director Hoffman is going to be spearheading the staff side of this and then I've asked Vice Chair for Tony to lead the discussion with council members. Director Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh Christine Hayworth is expected to join us any second now, and the reason being um we have some potential discussion items for you. So tonight at the regular meeting is the first opportunity for the council to adopt the comprehensive plan to replace the existing ones. Uh the reason being primarily the sixty day required commerce review ended on the eighth. We had a few draft comments come in to telegraph in November, but until it officially ends, we don't know what those comments will be. Two of those stayed the same. The Washstop uh letter that you have came in. It's favorable, no amendments uh in good word. Uh the one that we've been working on since Sunday, the eighth, is Department of Commerce. We quickly scheduled a meeting. Their letter, as we think we're draft on it. But and had a lot of items that were uncertain. The discussion we had with them is what is Lake Forest Park's um situation? Situation meaning that we want to meet the the GMA deadline of December thirty first for this periodic update. That we are also taking advantage of the Commerce Grant for the climate now that we will be updating for middle housing, the development regulations. And the critical areas or it's given that context and the vision of no large scale development, many of com- Commerce's draft comments went away. Then we asked them, do we need to wait since the meeting schedule for Thursday night until you submit this draft letter through Plan View? And then we receive it the regular channel, which would likely be after tonight. Um or are they considered final? And they discussed it internally. We went ahead and uh assumed it would not change. Once it got into plan due, ten minutes after Christina's email yesterday morning, they sent the final leg. So we now have it. It's represented word for word in what you have. Those four sets are the remaining comments. Uh Christina and I went through them all. We view them as not substantive. And the key there is that the public hearing draft of December second is what's in place. Plus some formatting issues. Um and another public hearing would need to be scheduled if we were to make substantive changes to policy, vision, mission, and so forth. We feel that there's an opportunity tonight to go through many of these. Uh Christina's email very uh oh describes them very well as to what they could be. It could make this version better. Most of them are references crops reference to other studies, so forth, and that they don't change any vision or policy or specifically the environmental review. So those are possible tonight. If it's the uh pleasure of the council, we can go through those leaving about ten minutes for EV chargers in this workshop and prepare for the discussion tonight on the ordinance.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Vice Chair for Tony, would you like to? And I'll give it to you.
Yes, so I I just wanted to get an hint out from uh the council on whether uh Director Hoffman's proposal is okay. Yeah, so we should complete the I guess the top line on these.
The link in Christina's email has them. I'm hoping that we can make it through as many as possible. And at least discuss them. I don't know what level of detail, but I'll I won't steal any more minutes. I'll leave it to Christina and the document in her link. There is a difference when Christina started to develop these notes for this discussion. Formatting was going on with Jay and SCJ. Three formatting changes were made. The glossary is in the current version that we talked about. There was a redundancy in the table of contents. That's fixed. There were three colors on an exhibit that we changed. That will not be in the base version for this discussion, but they're in the current formatted comprehensive plan at this minute. Take it away.
Thanks, Director Hoffman. So I have a presentation that summarizes all of the changes and then we can just zip through them. Um so let me share my screen. All right, here we are, December twelfth, twenty twenty four. Rapidly approaching.
Quiet, yeah.
Large. There we go.
Okay, oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks for letting me know. Um if it is slow to load, just stop me and and we'll get caught up. Um, all right. So as Director Hoffman noted, we did receive a total of uh five written comments. We've already discussed the WDFW comments. Those uh policy updates were made uh for the prior version of the comp plan that was reviewed for the public hearing. So we we what we had left before us were four comments from PSRC from uh the Washington Geological Survey, which is a a subset of DNR, uh Department of Natural Resources, um from the Department of Commerce and then from the Department of Transportation. Uh as Director Hoffman again noted, there were no required or recommended updates from Washdot, uh but we did have some recommendations from PSRC, WGS, and the Department of Commerce. Where feasible, uh where those would be non-substantive changes that we could make within the timeframe that we had. Um I've made some policy recommendations uh and in in the draft that we're going to go through tonight. Anything else is tabled for the twenty twenty five docket and it will be incorporated into the implementation plan. Uh by and large, uh we did try to table the recommendations. Uh but in particular with the Department of Commerce, none of theirs were were um requirements per se. They were recommendations, the way that they phrase things uh just because they're not a a regulatory body um in in the way that would require changes to our plan. Um so there's there's kind of some semantic stuff there. Uh so based on all of these comments, I am going to go through the changes that I'm recommending and then I will tab over to the document so you can see what those policies actually look like uh and we can go through them. Um so in the introduction, I've added some additional references to local plans that we consulted as part of our work. I've just added several to the list. Um they also asked us to uh add a section on emergency amendments to the comprehensive plan. You already have this in your code, so I've just added uh some policy language that supports something that you've already that you're already doing. In the land use section, they asked us to add the number of the population projection in number of people uh in addition to number of housing units. So I've added that. Uh and then we've made some revisions and additions to the policies. So policy LU one point eight. I've added a reference to protecting groundwater supplies. Um policy one point nine makes specific reference to this term lands useful for public purposes. Uh those were already discussed in the capital facilities element. We wanted them in the land use element as well. Uh policy LU one point ten uh refers to state citing requirements for essential public facilities. Uh one point eleven protects private property from unconstitutional takings. This is already something that I know you all are very well aware of. So this is again consistent with kind of what you're already doing. Uh policy LU three point three, they've asked us to explicitly mention this term best available science and take special consideration for anadromous fisheries. That's salmon species. Uh and policy nine point two was added. That is a coordination policy to work with adjacent jurisdictions, King County and PSRC in planning projects. Uh policy LU eleven point three, we were asked to address wildfire risk. I don't think that Lake Forest Park is at a serious risk for wildfires, but we've gone ahead and added that. Um and then there is some additional narrative in the volume two of the land use element uh that specifically addresses that lands useful for public purposes policy. This is the one where the bulk of the changes were. Uh so this is the longest section. All right, environmental quality and shorelines. Um there's a a reference to hazard mitigation plan added to the introduction section and then um the term sensitive areas was used throughout the plan. That's a holdover from prior versions of the plan. Uh we've gone ahead and added this um a a phrase like also known as critical areas or something similar in all of the places where sensitive areas are mentioned, just so that it's really clear that those are the same critical areas that are regulated under state law. Um we've added policy EQ six point eight to specifically address state and federal air quality standards. And then policy EQ nine point one um is revised to also include disproportionate impacts from climate change uh and and natural hazards. Housing has some additional references to some of the background documents added into that element. Just in volume two, there are no policy changes to the housing element. In capital facilities, we've added some policies to coordinate on organic materials related solid waste diversion efforts. Uh and then added a new policy CF three point ten to reassess the land use element if projected revenues fall short uh to make sure that facilities and services are provided to support your growth. And then um there is some explanatory footnoting uh because your budget process, um I think inadvertently did not include your six year capital improvements plan. Uh so we have added some notes to explain that that will be updated in early twenty twenty five and that will that information will then be incorporated into the capital facilities and transportation elements at that time. Uh so you'll see the same change show up in the transportation element as well. In utilities, uh we have the same critical areas reference added where sensitive areas were were mentioned. Uh and then a new policy U one point eight to develop a comprehensive or consolidated utility system map that brings together all of the public utilities into a single resource. Transportation uh has new policy T one point twelve added to support intergovernmental coordination and partnerships. And policy T four point nine, uh this is another one that asks us to reassess the transportation element if projected revenues fall short. And then that same footnoting to explain uh some of the budgeting. I see there's a hand up. Yes.
Yeah, please, please, I can sort of leave on and give you everybody.
Christina, could you go back a moment? There was a added policy with regard to uh developing a consolidated utility system map. Is that for a uh desire? And the reason I'm asking is um if it's a required, then we have to do something about it and desire we want to do something about.
Uh so this is this is driven by the Department of Commerce's comments. Um they are not requiring per se, they're recommending, um and it has to do with how they interpret the legislative intent behind some of this language. We should view this as a requirement, but this data exists and it would be a matter of obtaining it from the utility districts. So there wouldn't be anything that you would need to create. It would just be a matter of sandwiching it all together into one map. So it's a pretty low hanging fruit item, if that makes you feel any better.
Anytime you have to do work, um it comes at a cost. Low hanging fruit can cost quite a bit. So I'm just trying to understand.
Can we make it sound advisory or aspirational as opposed to mandatory?
It it is the the cover. The issue we had is with Public Works. The conversation we had going into this is it will be coming, but we need the director to come on board. The city will be doing it and it's not essential for this GMA adoption. So and they wanted to leave their comments as placekeepers acknowledging that's where they were at. So we don't we don't add this right now. We don't need to program and doing it. We anticipate doing it when we have public staff. When we get to CIPs. And the the conversation further was the vision and what we anticipate for concurrency for development and utilities and infrastructure matches captured. And so how we do those plans and budgeting with the levy and so forth will happen in twenty twenty five. We cannot inform it and did not inform it fully like other cities right now, but it works for Lake Forest Park.
And we can certainly make some adjustments to the language when we actually look at the document um so that or we can strike that recommendation entirely and revisit it for twenty twenty five. Um so we we have options.
I find if we if if there's a I'm trying to separate out the difference between a mandate required that's unfunded or something that we want to do if we can find the funding to.
It's the second. We're we're fine locally. It's a regional suggestion and it's it has no impact. Ideally, it would have been done June, July, and August. The outreach was done. Very little input was given back by the utility districts. Then we had the the vacancy.
Yep, this is much more important when considering communities that have a lot of green field development. Um so it's it's less important for a community like Lake Forest Park that is already pretty mature.
Then we talked to them about South Gateway Town Center, primarily residential, and that's at that moment, I thought it would come away entirely just disappear.
Definitely.
Yes, I have a question on what if revenue falls short means what revenue uh had uh in in these provisions, let's say if revenue falls short. I I I understand that we reassess things, but revenue falls short. We're not developing things. Uh you know, for example, it says if revenue falls short, CF three point ten. If revenue falls short, reassess the land use element to determine where and how future growth can be accommodated. Well, I I don't I don't get what that revenue reference is to.
So, yeah, in your in your capital improvement plan, um you have costs and funding sources associated with your projects and not so not all of the well, any, I guess this could be considered for any potential of funding source. Um if you're not able to obtain all of the funding for a project and that project were necessary to support the growth allocations that we've been planning for, then we would want to reassess the land use element to determine whether growth needed to be moved somewhere else or something something to that effect. In the case of Lake Forest Park, this is a very unlikely scenario again because you're a mature community. Nobody's planning on building huge infrastructure projects to support some of the wild growth allocations that other communities have, right? I mean, that's just not that's that's not what we're planning on here. That's not what this community wants and it's not what the region is, you know, expecting. Um so in 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 reality, this is not a scenario that is likely to come up. We do anticipate that growth will happen on more of a an infill basis and at a a more moderate pace. Um and so you're not ever going to be in this position where one project is the linchpin uh for your community's growth allocation.
This language.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Who asked for this language to be added? Because I think C three point six, for example, maintain a balance between available revenue and capital facilities uh need that seems good enough to me. So I do ask for this. How important is it?
Commerce, it's not important.
Okay.
Commerce. Yeah, Commerce did ask for it and they did make particular reference to the policy about balance. They still asked for this language to show up.
Okay, I guess it's okay. I just don't I don't like the the fact that it can be read in any different ways.
Okay.
colleagues. Questions on point.
Certainly. I guess broadly, uh my question is, um you know none of these changes, of course, are in the uh packet that we got tonight. Um are we going to have a chance to look at it even between now and the next hour or at least just sort of there?
So she has the version depending on the time in the workshop. We can go to the exact spot there noted in her link. And each one has a placekeeper. Or the to do none of them and proceed as shown right now, or third choice. They matter. Let's do them, but put them in the implementation chapter bucket to add to next year's annual docketing. Ever.
Everybody.
I I've been scrolling through as we go through just because I have the document pulled up and open and I can find the track changes. Uh and honestly, I don't have any problem with any of the wording changes uh and um and if we actually think we are going to develop a comprehensive system map and we think we're okay with the commerce language on if revenues revenues decline. Um those are the only two issues that I saw. Other everything else seemed innocuous. So but it others, we can we can scroll through that fairly quickly. Based on Christina's roadmap, I I just did it as she was talking.
Yep, my intention was to keep it very a very straightforward process. Sorry, Councilman.
I have a question on what what constitutes if revenue falls short? What is the definition of it falls short?
If revenue for your your planned capital facility improvements or transportation improvements fall short, so the funding sources that would pay for your CIP and TIP.
So is that predefined as falling short? I mean, is it? I might not being able to articulate it properly. But I but I I the language is concerning to me too. By the reference of if it falls short, so I don't know, fall short by fall short by how much? Or is it fall short period? So that's my problem with that one sentence.
Okay.
Okay. It it's meant to retain all local budgeting authority. And what it what it does is it says the CIP is not a wish list to provide for facilities for planned growth, but there's no way to fund them. It says, show your math on how you could fund them. If those funds don't come about, you do not fund them, but then the CIP should not reflect that you're going to do them.
Yeah, and you know, so for for some some communities, let's say we're we're talking like a new fire station, something like that might be really critical to provide for new growth in a certain area if there isn't adequate fire service provided. So in the event that revenue fell short for that fire station and that project is not viable, then your charge under a policy like this would be to determine if there's a different place that that growth could go where services would be adequate.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies it.
Okay.
Christina, if I understand you correctly, this is again kind of going back to more of the greenfields kind of situation. Largely, so boilerplate language and colleagues will remind you, I haven't been through this before and other topics too. Recommended language that comes from different groups. We rely on Director Hoffman and his team to to say whether it's going to be required or not. Many of these things are optional.
Very much so. What they don't have is a local land. They review every city. You know, most cities are much larger, have developable area, impact fees, etc. Lake Forest Park does not.
Right.
Council members, if if you want to do a quick scroll through, you would go to Christina's email, click on the link and then download the document so you get in the word joint track changes. Uh in general, I I am okay with all the changes uh but others that not have a chance to go through looking forward.
And I can I can bring it up so that we are all looking at it together. Let me just.
That would be great to see.
Yeah, swap my share.
The workshop, which is preferred as opposed to the regular meeting because the but the agenda item in the meeting is the ordinance.
Yeah.
Let's do that if we can. colleagues, so we'll be getting it last, so it's we going to be in the mirror here on this one. Give it a second to load.
I'm I'm scrolling anyway. You don't want to see this. All right.
Yeah, fair enough.
And uh the city attorney is aware of them. She'll be there at the regular meetings. She's aware of this workshop and she has the material. If any of them are determined substantive in your opinion, they can go in the parking lot for next year, that amendment. We could choose just to ignore them, the recommendations, or we can uh uh improve them in the current format.
Did the document load okay for everybody? Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh CF three ten.
Yes, and there is a similar policy in the transportation element.
You want to run through top to bottom in the next fifteen, twenty minutes?
Uh starting at the beginning of the plan document and marching through?
Yes, and this group can see each of them.
Is everybody is everybody okay with that? Or do we need some time to digest this policy still?
I mean, if they're not substantive, yeah, this would that would be fine with me. I mean, what do you have, like?
CF four, yeah?
Yeah, CF four, yeah. If you see any flags, raise them.
Okay, all right, then I'm gonna take us to the beginning. Um and I'm just gonna start tabbing my way through. Uh whoops, sorry about that. From the actual beginning this time. Wow, what is happening? Okay.
Increase the size just a little bit.
Yes, I can. Um and we're definitely gonna try navigating by changes again. Sorry, bear with me on this. I'm so sorry. Normally this works uh so.
No, you're you're fine. It's that takes a lot of bandwidth on a computer to do that.
It keeps jumping back to policy CF three point ten. It just really wants to focus on that today. Um, okay. All right, you jumped me to three point ten again, I swear. Okay, um so here's the list of additional plans that were added. Um the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Climate Action Plan, Safe Streets Report, uh Project and the Town Center Vision uh were added here. This is in the introduction section. So in the next section we have is this blurb on emergency amendments. Uh and then I made specific reference to the code that you already have adopted that addresses emergency amendments of the comprehensive plan. Let me know when I'm ready to move on.
colleagues. Good with this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We're long straight down our capacity, Debbie.
Yeah.
All right, so um the introduction to the land use element has the addition of um a total population in twenty twenty four of fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty five people, which is the eight hundred and seventy housing units. Again, this is the total, not the growth from where you're currently at, but the the total in twenty forty four.
Then.
Let's let's use British. Carry on.
Carry on, okay. Uh here's the revision to policy LU one point eight and then new policies LU one point nine, one point ten, and one point eleven. Uh and this includes the lands useful for public purposes. This is a mashup of two definitions from state law and policy uh that kind of consolidates the infrastructure lands as well as the uh green resource lands into one definition.
Yeah, well, it's good.
Great. LU three point three, this is that policy related to best available silent science and anadromous fisheries.
Good. Again, we're done and that that'll be in the critical areas. So it's just development regulations.
Yep, you already have to do this, so.
There you go. I have it somehow.
All right, coordination policy LU nine point two. Uh and this, I just lumped everything together, adjacent jurisdictions, King County, PSRC.
Okay.
Okay. Eleven point three, this is the wildfire policy. Right, environmental quality, the addition of the hazard mitigation plan into the introduction as a referenced plan document in preparing it. I'm not gonna wait for the okay on that one. I feel like that's probably non controversial. Uh, here's where you start to see this reference term, critical areas, um, since people had trouble finding, they weren't using the term sensitive areas, so we've added that reference throughout. Here's policy EQ six point eight, this is the air quality policy. Uh, again, you already have to do these things. Addition to EQ nine point one, this is the disproportionate impacts from climate stresses in the future.
Says May, so we're good.
And it will be your climate element.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, so here we are in capital facilities. So this is the addition of a footnote that explains kind of where you're at with your CIP update uh and when that will happen. Uh, and this this note appears a few different times. CF one point five is this coordination policy specifically related to organic materials reduction. And then CF three point ten. All right, I did also pick up a few um hippos while I was going through. This is the utilities element. This is again adding the reference to the term critical areas. And then here's policy U dash one point eight. This is Mr. Lebo's policy of interest from our earlier discussion. Uh, so this this is phrased as coordinate with utility service providers. So in the event that they're not forthcoming, there's no time limit on this, nothing, nothing like that. But we could certainly rephrase this if you prefer.
Oh, it's awesome.
So it's not just that.
Right?
Yeah.
I see enough from council member, I just thought, right?
Okay, great. All right, uh, all right, now we're in the transportation element. So this is um, this is where I was just flipping to in my slide deck uh when we paused for discussion. So you haven't gotten kind of the background on this, but uh here's T point twelve, this uh one point twelve, this is uh a coordination policy to enhance various regional systems. Um, I slotted it in here because it's in the kind of the regional issues section of policy or of the goal one policies.
So thoughts on this one makes sense to me.
Can't do it without it, real mental coordination, so yeah.
Right.
You already do this. This is the theme of the night. This is all stuff that you already do. All right, and then we have this similar policy from the capital facilities element. This is funding funding shortage. And if this language feels better, I can go back and revise CF three point ten. Um, this probable funding term versus revenue.
An example would be a city that relies on impact fees, development doesn't happen. But what do you do with the CIP list?
Yeah.
So it's funding plus CIP list plus actual development. And they all have to equal
Yeah.
in the conflict.
Yep. Okay.
That's okay, yeah.
Yeah, I like this language a little bit, but uh they're kind of the same now that I understand.
Yeah, and if you if you want me to take a couple of minutes, um, uh, seven to make the language more or less the same, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, don't don't worry about it, yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Uh, so that's all of the volume one stuff. Uh, so now we are into the background information. So here's the section on lands useful for public purposes. These come directly from state requirements and what I've done is refer to the lists in the capital facility section and just listed lands useful for public purposes here as well. Added, this is in the housing element, so this adding the actual um number of people in addition to the housing units to that analysis section. They asked for a statement on disparate impacts, so that is here with reference to appendix A, which had already been previously prepared by Leland Consulting. And then uh this is a section on adequate provisions. This is a summary of information that was already included in appendices B and C. It's this one is a little lengthier. But again, this is already stuff that is in attachments elsewhere and then summarized here.
We have to put these things that are summarized to other places. We have to put these up.
It would be more redundant than we're making it.
It is, it is.
This would call it.
I see.
And then uh
But is it like a more of a red flag to not make the change than to ignore it because our reply is it's already in here?
It it would be received better.
Yeah.
Thank you for the comments we've incorporated as opposed to thank you for the comment. No, thank you.
Your reading page.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. That's again, that's the the theme of the night. This is already something that we do or that exists and we're just, we're
All of them, most of these, the character is if it came up at tree board, CAC, planning commission, we would have went to that section and said, how redundant do you want this document to be? Clarity is good, cross referencing is good, too much is redundancy.
Right.
Paul, it's all good.
Okay. Um, and then we are in the capital facilities section. So here in the forecast piece of the various categories, I've added this statement, Lake Forest Park is a mature community. Anticipated to grow primarily through infill and then that same footnote about the timing of the capital improvement plan. So this appears in a few different places. Here's the one about drainage. Parks. Yep, and then we're in transportation. And in between when I sent the email yesterday uh and today, Fair and Peers got back to me with some suggestions for updates to the content of the this volume two. So this is uh the the edits that are shown here are a little bit more extensive than the link that I shared yesterday. Um, and we can talk through those now or or later, but essentially they are to respond to PSRC's comments about the level of analysis that was performed. Um, and I do strongly recommend considering those.
Check, Rachel Hoffman. If if we can motor them in six minutes, I'd recommend we do.
I'm zipping through. All right, this is, I'm sorry, we're still in capital facilities. All right, so here we here we are. So conditions for driving, um, Fair and Peers has recommended that we strike uh this paragraph. Um, this is some dated uh volume information is my understanding. Um, and then also striking this section. So the original um analysis used uh I think a twenty fifteen report and they have been able to update that to a twenty eighteen report. Um, so they're they're proposing some uh some strikeouts of that outdated information. They have proposed uh replacing this state facility section uh with a new piece of analysis and I'll stay here for a minute if you want to skim.
This is in some ways the the most difficult part to accept right now. Because I feel like traffic is an important issue for us to make sure our technical tendencies say things we agree with. Um, so.
Certainly, and we can, we can table this for now. This, the edits refer back to work that I think Fair and Peers themselves did in two thousand eighteen. Um, so it should already reflect a lot of the I guess, policy and direction uh that has been pretty consistent, I think since then.
I ran away, let's get to it. I went to just because of, you know, the implications, especially for the major highways and the traffic volumes that are going to be that remember our traffic volumes increased thirty percent when they started tolling at five twenty or more. I forget what the percentage was, but our traffic volumes simply the toll might not five twenty that caused our traffic volumes to increase. So.
Yeah.
As as a category, the the there is no time hazard. We don't anticipate PSRC certification anytime soon. It's not that much of a priority. We can put in the next batch easily address it fully and better.
We could hold this and uh and deal with it later. So we have a chance just to read the new language. Uh, and because it's new analysis or or new new substance is the way I think of it as opposed to old substance.
Uh, what what if we incorporate it, just recognize that you may update it later?
I I was gonna recommend the same thing. The numbers I know.
Should be updated.
I'm a data geek, not those numbers all the way off, so. Um, in terms of volume.
Those numbers are more accurate than the previous ones.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. So this is
Okay.
this is straight to move forward.
The yes, that we would update this to recollect it, but that we would come back and read this.
Yes, okay, okay.
Okay.
At some moment, I'll be in a room with a PSRC person and we'll be having this conversation and we can easily make changes to the plan at any moment.
Yeah, I I think that the statement can be made. It's a very, it's been very fluid for a period of time in terms of traffic bodies, so.
I think it would be relevant, though, that we add this.
So is that the consensus? Because we can put it in, there's I don't see a danger.
Yeah.
I like having that.
Okay, great, love that.
Great. Um, so this is what was removed.
But I I just wondered if we had had better uh counts from the work that Washout did, you know, correcting for the sound trans. I don't know if they got better numbers when they did some.
They're still, they're still old, what they did. Yeah, unfortunately.
We're monitoring with council member good as to availability of any studies or the knowledge that they're doing studies.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, we're also getting counts from our own traffic services that we're conducting. You do right now.
Oh, that's Seattle.
They have, they have or had.
That's great. Best numbers.
Time to check again with that.
Uh, we only have a couple of minutes to stick to.
All right, let me let me see if we can speed through any more of this. So this is all the stuff that was removed. Um, I added a paragraph about uh how these projects address multimodal LOS standards. Um, this was in the linked version that I sent out yesterday. Any questions on this piece?
No, but can I say, can we save the deletions too uh for when we pick this back up in the future, not just the additions? Thanks.
Okay, yeah, certainly. Okay. Um, and then the transportation funding section um was replaced with basically with this paragraph that says there currently aren't any planned projects and we'll be updating this the TIP in early twenty twenty five. Um, funding sources remain the same. It's a simplification of um what was down in this deleted section. In this deleted section, sorry. Uh, so it just simplifies all of this because all of these projects are kind of uh done for the time being. Um, and then similar language about Lake Forest Park being a mature built out community. Uh, in level of service policies, we've expanded the vehicular LOSs to include LOS E. Um, that gives you guys a little more wiggle room before any projects would be required. And that's it. That was the last one.
Yeah. Paul, any other comments or questions for Christina? Thank you very much, Christina. We need to pivot to Katie real quickly. We're gonna get upstairs here. We can talk about projects. Thank you so much. Katie, maybe you should sit up here as we look. Hi.
Sit next to you.
Paul, can you see? You can see me. I don't know how far you can see around the room. Please sit.
Okay.
There, you're definitely.
I can see you.
Okay.
Uh, okay, thank you, Mayor Council. So I am here to talk about uh EV charging at City Hall. And um this is just a little review of EV charging. Uh, since this has, this project's begun, everyone remembers in two thousand and three when we applied for funds to put EV chargers at City Hall and at the Public Works Yard. And what happened was we were awarded um just funding for a public works yard that was in March. And then we executed that contract in September. Since that has happened, the new development is that um some jurisdictions withdrew. So Commerce had extra funds that they were able to reallocate and send them our way and they have awarded us an additional seventy five thousand dollar grant to put chargers at City Hall. So that's seventy five for Public Works and seventy five for City Hall. Um, if we do decide to uh move forward with this, it would be a total of a hundred fifty for the two sites. And that would be a contract amendment. We wouldn't need a new contract. You can go to the next slide. Thanks. So this is uh the the plan for where they would be located right now. This is what our engineer worked up. Uh, pulling power from the building. This is the City Hall parking lot, um, running out towards that lamppost and then coming through the the parking slots in the middle. So this won't interfere um with uh the the ADA spots or the spots to say for visitors only or for the spots that we reserve for our cars. And um, there's ten spots here. It's, it would be five chargers. Um, and they are dual head chargers, so with it can charge ten cars vehicles and um as long as the majority of these are used by the public, some can also be used by staff or uh our our City Hall fleet cars of it it they they confirm that it can be used by a variety of whomever may want to use them on that day, as long as some are used or available for the public. Uh, next slide, please, Matt. And so this is the cost breakdown the engineer um has put together so far and um you you may notice right off the bat that it's cheaper um than the cost estimate that was developed for the public works yard. Um, and uh no HMA, uh hot mixed asphalt is is required um because the the cuts are small enough and it I haven't yet asked them to do more work on the um the public works yard, but I I suspect that there might be a cost savings there too when they look at it more closely. But for now, they've developed this, this, which is for the City Hall. Uh, total price is hundred thirty one. And so after the Commerce Ward of seventy five, that would be fifty six thousand. That would have to be locally funded. That would have to be locally funded, so, so that is the project in a nutshell, and um I think that's maybe the last slide too, just questions.
Can we use traffic camera uh, revenue, um, new traffic camera revenue for the fifty six thousand?
Cannot, it's not traffic safety. It would be tied to that. The Capital Facilities Fund has sufficient funding there to support this.
Okay.
Um, the one thing that when Katie brought this to me, and glad to see the drawing tonight, was just making sure we weren't losing stalls. That was one thing we want to vet between now and when we bring the contract to you in January is that the service at City Hall will support it. Um, there's also a question about would our generator support those EV chargers, keep them going in and outage? I highly doubt it. Um, it barely keeps City Hall, so.
So do not count on me working during that.
Correct, well, yeah, we're not. We cannot be a charging station. Yeah, councilor, we both know.
So it's often that we see these charging um, stations or a service, even go or like with the intent that we would lease these locations to somebody who would actually provide a electric uh, charging and maintain that charger, because these chargers do break down and they're quite expensive. I mean, an eight thousand dollars is more of a residential cost, not a.
I think these are level two.
Yeah, that's the, that's the cost for the level two, which is like the mid-grade level. It's, it's not the super fast one. Um, and it's not, and it's not the level one, which is just a hundred twenty volts. The level two ones are two hundred forty volts.
But as any consideration that we would simply lease this and provide the power for someone to actually provide, I mean, chargers and maintain. The other is that um, as standalone things, they become the waller.
Yes.
And so you may want to consider putting these on those goals.
I think that. Back to the.
Otherwise, they they are the wallers.
Yeah, I don't think that indicates that here. Yeah, I've seen that of possible installation.
Yes, right.
Who tells some things, I think we'll have to check, and this is just a, that's up, the mayor just needs to sign the letter, says we're interested, but we can still back out in January, we're in contract. But um, I don't know how this functions, if the idea behind these dollars, it's that it's all maintained by the city or we can enter into these agreements. So we'll have to check into that.
Yeah.
Before it comes back in January.
Councilor Riddles.
Allers.
Allers. Vice Sir, first time.
Uh, is there revenue generated for the city in the sense that we charge for the location?
You haven't talked about doing that. But I've.
That was another question that we kind of discussed is, is it free, can we charge? And so these are their questions, so we have to find out.
Where the other?
I mean.
We have, we're running.
Yeah. We need to. The other question is, yes, can we, let's find out if we charge for these. So where we're leaving this now is, oh, councilor, good, sorry. Please.
Oh, I'm in favor of charging the public um, a nominal fee for for charging.
We have a lot of things we need to have questions answered about, but this is again, non-binding. Just keeping us in the loop, making sure we've got access to it. Thank you, and still very much for bringing this to us. It's great work once again.
And they contacted Katie and said, hey, can you let us know by December sixth or something? It's like.
Yeah, that was.
Fascination is not our mercy, but now it was so. With that, we're adjourned, we're moving upstairs. Thanks, everybody. Um, I'm not on camera, but uh, we're back from our, excuse me, from our closed session, and with that, um, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Hey.
Good night.